Okay, it's 11:35. We're back from recess and we're picking up with the item number two on the agenda, which is budget presentations. I was also, it was indicated to me that we, I needed to make an announcement that we will be doing an executive session in this afternoon. Just pull up the information on that before we get started. At our 2:00 PM, we will have an executive session pursuant to RCW 4231101I to discuss with legal counsel matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss litigation or potential litigation to which the governing body is likely to become a party when public knowledge is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence. And that will be 30 minutes. Board action may follow, and that'll be a piece of our 2:00 PM session.
Yes, that's correct, Chair.
It's not on the agenda, but it is now out there. We'll make that advisement again at 2:00 PM.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, board members, and I want to give a special thanks to our budget team again, and all our departments and their budget teams. Now, this isn't necessarily business as usual. It's gathering the information. They look across at some vacancies, but also TC Connect. So I really appreciate the department's hard work in putting this together. The format for this after, for this morning is to go through the department budget request fairly quick. But please, commissioners, if you have any questions, anytime, we have the budget team and the department directors here ready to speak to their requests. This is informational at this time. And then we can hand it back to you, Chair, for the final conclusion of our agenda this morning. We're going to start off with human resources. Their requests are for the COLA and reduction of retirement percentage. Next slide, we have public health. Same thing. Next slide, social services aspect of public health. Same thing. Next slide, we have information technology. Sherry's pointing her head down there. There's a overview of Sherry's request that includes the COLA and reduction retirement percentage, but also has two, removal of end dates and some software requests, and also the Body One Canon request listed there. So any questions from commissioners?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Like on your information technology, where it talks about removing the end date from an FTE for EPM.
Yeah, the EPM is the budget module for TC Connect. So I believe, and budget team, correct me if I'm wrong here, that that's a position with an end date. The request is to remove it. The reason it's coming in under other funds is because it'll be built into the rates going forward.
But that's, so that's $155,000, right?
These are the requests.
And that's what it's going to cost us just to remove the end date? Because we're going to hold over, continue on? Is that what it is?
That would be the total funding for the next fiscal year for the salaries and benefits for the employees.
And when we remove an end date, oftentimes, that's more beneficial for recruitment and that type of thing. Is that what we're talking about here?
Yes, because it takes the position that it's temporary, and then it would make it recur. Now, again, these are the requests from the departments that we're reviewing with you. And we will talk about some of our recommendations at a later time.
Okay. And some of these on here, didn't we see them other places? Like this one about the, well, the last one, incremental FTE for IT sheriff. The sheriff presented something about an IT person.
It's because they would pay, the $140,000 would be part of the rates, and the sheriff would pay those rates to the IT department. So you see it in the sheriff, the sheriff needs appropriation to pay IT. IT needs appropriation to pay the employee.
And when you say other funds, that comes out of the new sales tax approval?
Yes.
Because it's an enhancement to his office so he can provide a better service.
Well, as they've, as they've increased their workforce and different components, they need to increase support to Sherry, also support that.
Like cameras and all that stuff, all the extra stuff, okay.
Yes, Chair, to your point, it's going to be, it's going to be seen in both places because they're both accounting for it. One to pay for it, and then one to have the appropriation to spend the dollars on. Hope that, hope that clarifies. Yep. Any other questions about information technology? Sherry, anything you want to add? Okay. We have trial services here. They have the COLA, the reduction for retirement. They also have an updated allocation of admin assistant costs, and then administrative office for the court's grant.
If I may just add for this one, the AOC grant actually will, would be pulled for the conversation yesterday. We're getting the technical support in a different manner.
Okay, so it's to be adjusted. Thanks so much for that. Any other comments or thoughts? Questions? All right. Emergency management. They also have the COLA and the reduction. They have fiscal year '22 Homeland Security Grant placeholder, extreme weather grant placeholder, and then the '21 Homeland Security Grant placeholder as well. Any questions for the budget team or Department of Emergency Management?
So these are expenditures, but there'd be presumably some other...
All that by revenue, except for the COLA and the retirement.
Then anything you want to add?
No.
We have Medic One listed here as well, COLA, reduction of retirement, the Medic One unit delivery date change, supplies and equipment for ALS, VLS training. Any questions from commissioners? Okay. We have CPAD, we have the COLAs and the reduction of retirement percentage.
I guess I am curious about that reduction of retirement percentage. It's quite a bit. What's the difference compared to some of the other? Well, yeah, the change, I mean, there's, I see other ones in here, but they're $2 or $4.
Oh, it's in thousands, so $2,000.
Yeah, I know, it's thousands. But I mean, why is it so much there?
It's based on the number of, number of FTE in the department.
Okay, good.
That's a notification from the state of Washington where we buy our retirement benefits.
Okay.
And the costs are going down.
Yeah, okay, well, that's good.
Unbelievable.
Unbelievable. We're on page number 10. Meeting planning portion, again, the COLAs and reduction retirement percentage. Pretty straightforward. Then we have central services. We have the COLAs and reduction retirement percentage. But in addition, they have some transfers. That one will be withdrawn, as it was withdrawn on the commissioner's line.
The 458,000.
We have an additional tech FTE listed there. We have camera upgrades, security improvements, the Mottman complex remodel. We have a new droid coming online, C33. Just kidding.
That is the sheriff's building now.
We're always hoping there's a droid to help us with our office.
Yeah.
Sheriff's building. Is that the project code?
Must be.
Major maintenance, special projects, Tilly Skybridge repairs. Want to pause and see if there are any questions for the central service team.
So like Tilly Skybridge repairs, that's paid out of the road fund, or what, I mean, where's that?
Capital expense, and I would look to Bruce to ask which fund it's from.
From reserves.
It's from reserves.
Building reserves.
Building reserves, thank you.
That's M and O.
Means the money was already collected.
Yeah.
I think it's cool that the county has a Skybridge.
Except we're having to pay to repair it. That's not the cool.
That's not the cool part of it. All right, moving on to public defense. We have the COLAs, reduction of retirement percentage, defense data and business applications, management. There is an addition of an FTE there.
And that has to come out of general fund?
No. Patrick, why don't you come up and join us? Rob, you were saying?
Oh, I was going to say, I don't believe so. I think that would be ineligible cost for public safety sales tax.
Can you differ with that? Robin, some of it?
I believe that it would.
We have to do some research.
Yeah, because it's, yeah.
Okay. Patrick, do you have anything you want to add?
Just good morning again, commissioners. Patrick O'Connor, Public Defense. To that point, yes, I do believe it would be eligible. It's a midterm adjustment that we are making based on the emergency needs for the department for this position. We're circling back. This position was approved by the board heading into our budget year this year, but with the reduction exercise, we had to cut that position. So I am asking for a midterm adjustment. I believe it's eligible as we continue to face the crisis of data, digital, law enforcement, management, and discovery. It just continues to be question load, and I don't have that position like the prosecutors and we do. The other, let's just say, before I move to the next point, if there's any other questions.
One thing I just want to note on the last item, Defense of 23 FTE, that's an OPD position. I know, I think Jose reached out to Jennifer. There's not a dollar amount associated with this request. This is a position that's grant funded through our office, so it's no impact to the general fund. You won't see a dollar amount. Well, you don't see a dollar amount today, but we'll work on that dollar amount. That position's already been approved and budgeted for, but there's an adjustment that needs to be made. Again, no general fund impact, but we'll work with the staff on getting that dollar amount when it's time for the board's decision point.
Thanks, Patrick. Do you have a question, Patrick?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks for being here. Public Works operating, and I see that we have students joining us remotely, but also Karen's here as well. They have the maintenance expense for the EV charging station, drive, culvert, temporary repair. They have the COLAs. Oh, good.
I have a question on that. Where are the funds coming from for that $253,000 for the first item?
Good morning, Karen.
Good morning. Karen, we have Assistant Director of Public Works. So I also would look to our budget team to help. This is actually something that's footnoted. It's on the errata list, so it actually needs to be adjusted. It's not...
It needs to be what?
The amount needs to be adjusted, and that needs to be moved to central services. So the actual Public Works request is about $72,000, of which $48,000 will be grant funded. Do, do you want to speak to it, Dolly, or maybe Summer?
The other side of this request, the revenue is on the central services side, where it is $363,000 grant funded completely. So it's just, it's only showing up here because I put it in the wrong. I needed to allocate costs.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, it'll be changed when they take care of it.
It's a technical.
Okay. Maintenance expenses.
There, there are some ongoing maintenance expenses associated with the request that would, for future years, but that about amount is, off the top of my head, about $8,000 for the EV charging station at the waste and recovery center. I can't speak to the...
Be out of the solid waste fund.
Correct, out of the solid waste fund.
Okay. But we're not talking about $253,000 of ongoing maintenance expenses. That would be, that would be surprising. That would give me heart, heart failure.
Different discussion.
Heart failure, not heartburn. Program wouldn't pay for it, so. If we go to the next page.
Sure. So this is the capital? Or is that where we, you're at, the capital?
H14.
H14, okay. So again, countywide vehicle charging station, we just talked about that. That will actually be removed from the Public Works funds. The next two items, the Pacific Avenue and Yelm Highway overlay projects, we're actually showing a reduction in funds. Those are REIT II funds that are being released because we were able to get 100% funding, grant funding for those projects. And so we were able to release that amount of REIT II funding. We are proposing or have reallocated that through the budget process for the potential payoff of the Woodland Creek debt, the sewer debt that we owe. So we believe that amount is about $750,000. So that was a bring up of funds.
Great job on those grants.
Well, that's our fantastic engineering team that received those, so thank you for that. The work site reconfiguration, you can see, has no dollar figure there. It's net neutral. That is just honestly a technical adjustment that moved money from one fund, Fund 4040, one of our solid waste funds, to the capital fund, Fund 4050. The next two items, Gate Belmore Trail, excuse me, these are being removed from our capital improvement program, but only because we are covering them under our trail connectivity program. So we will continue to build out our Gate Belmore Trail as funds are available and as we, you know, continue to scope out that project. But we removed these as two separate projects, and one of those specifically because it was a placeholder in case we had received some RCO grant money that has not yet materialized for us. The next project, the Marvin Road upgrade, we're asking for, this is actually, it says $400,000, but it's actually $200,000 because you're seeing the expenditure out of our capital fund. You're also seeing a $200,000 expenditure out of our transportation improvement fund because that fund, that is an operating transfer that will fund that request. So it's actually basically a $200, $200,000 project request for the Marvin Ray, Marvin Road upgrade, and that is to fund a facility relocation agreement with Dugesson Energy. So again, that's funded by transportation improvement funds. The next one, countywide electrical services. This is again 100% grant money through HSIP. It includes some 2020, five, or 2026 money, I believe, as well, but that is fully funded through grants. The culvert program, we are adding that in to take care of emergency culvert replacements as they arise. You may have noticed earlier, we had a request in 2024 for some Kellogg Drive culvert, culvert temporary repair. So we're adding that on to the capital improvement program to be able to respond to emergencies. That is going to be funded from the road fund. The next item, Marvin Road Upgrade Phase Three. This again is a, funded from our capital program, but these are transportation impact fees that we'll pay for that project. There's questions, specific questions about the project, let me know. The mud bay pavement preservation, we received a $3.09 million grant. So we are, this again will span more than just the years that you see here on the slide, but we have a $3.9 million grant that we received, and so we would be asking for in 2025, $150,000 of that with the remaining money in those future years. There is a match of, I believe, $90,000 in road fund for that. So that's pretty good leverage of funds, I'd say, there. This next item is stormwater culvert replacement program. So similarly, this is coming out of our stormwater fund, so Fund 4070. This is part of our asset management program. Again, we're putting $200,000 into that program so that they can systematically review the culverts that may need to be replaced on an ongoing basis. So we have that program built in and the funding available to do that. And the next four items all have to do with the water and sewer utilities, the ARPA-funded projects for water and sewer main replacements in the Boston Harbor and Tamashan neighborhood. These are, projects are intended to be fully funded by the ARPA funds, but what we've done is because the money has to be obligated by December 31 of 2024, we wanted to add in some contingency funding. We, $75,000 per project in case there are project scope changes after that obligation date, so that we, the ARPA funds have some pretty strict requirements about how you have to contract and use that money. So we wanted to have some contingency flexibility money in case things come up in that construction process so that we can respond and, and continue that work.
But that might be money that's left over when we get...
We hope, we hope and intend for it to be, but we didn't want our project to come to a screeching halt because we didn't have any flexible funds.
Any questions for Karen? This is time. This slide is non-departmental. It's a residential energy efficiency incentive program, multi-site solar feasibility study, repayment of the housing of the payments, which is for 24 homeowners.
First two items are 100% grant.
In the last item, we are still working with, what's the group calls?
CDC.
Yeah. Regularly touching base with them. They've advanced the conversation to their insurance carrier, and as of last week, it's still with them, and they're discussing it. So look forward to bringing that.
Who's that again?
CDC.
Oh, this is still the study issue?
Yeah.
So right now, we have to pay back the state and the feds.
So it's actually Amy from the clerk's office is regularly reaching out to their executive director, Justin, to keep it going. I think she's on a weekly...
Did they ever put an application or a claim into their insurance carrier?
We don't know if they put a claim in, but they're, they're having discussions with their insurance carrier and their attorney on what the next steps are. And we've been told they're reviewing it right now. That concludes the department's request for the midterm. Again, just want to thank the departments. This represents quite a bit of work and the timelines, working with the challenges that we're continuing to work with TC Connect. I appreciate all the departments making themselves available, even those that are remote. So with that, turning back to you, Chair.
Could we just kind of touch on the next step in our budget journey?
Yeah, it's a great journey. Makes it sound like it's a...
Something fun.
Fun, fun experience. The next step is we're actually going to be talking this afternoon about where we think the midterm and some recommendations on, on the midterm. With, regarding the general fund, many of these requests have other funding sources and are supported. So we'll start that conversation this afternoon, get some perspective from the board, and then look to bring it back next week to finalize and continue to move it forward. At the same time, we'd like to start a conversation about budget containment, get some board direction, and then do some research and bring it back with some modeling on how that affects the forecast.
And that'll be discussed this afternoon as well?
Yes. Yeah, we'll start the conversation this afternoon.
Okay. Commissioner Items, we've got 58 seconds. Commissioner, yeah? Sorry, just kidding.
Want me to bring up the US funding?
Uh, yes.
Um, so as we're looking at the AIS for the Capital Lake, me and Commissioner Manster had a conversation about funding mechanisms, right? And we would like, I guess, staff to bring forward proposals on what funding mechanisms could be used for... could be used for Capital Lake, because I think the board needs to consider that, especially if we're going to commit ourselves to doing it. I would like, for me, I would like to explore options such as stormwater, as well as, there was a chunk from fundamental public health that was set for environmental health purposes, like I would like to see if that's an option. Sorry, Jennifer, she's, she's there, she's, probably her eye is twitching, but I just would like to see it, just different funding mechanisms if, and if maybe for stormwater, for example, if it cannot all be covered by stormwater, like what's the percentage that it can cover? So.
Yeah, we're happy to do the research on that, I know there's been some conversations as being new to the conversation, I just want to make sure that all the bases are covered, but you mentioned an option that I hadn't heard about, so we can research that as well and bring that back.
Ambitious on public health.
It's a stretch, I know, but I just would like at least to.
Yeah, there were storm, like, you know, in, some language was highlighted in some of the emails that have been going around about, you know, language within the limitations of the stormwater fees, but, you know, the question I had was, the board a few years ago authorized, the Public Works Department came forward and said they wanted to pursue habitat projects that had a much, you know, less direct connection, and that was cleared by legal and we authorized that, they ended up not going forward on that for other reasons, or they delayed implementation of that, but there was a discussion at that time that supported the notion that the stormwater fees had flexibility that may be a little broader than what it reads in some of the language in the RCW. So we just need to be, you know, a little clear on that, refresh that, and let the new commissioners in on that since we're being proposed to make a financial commitment, we just want to know what our options are, that's certainly a fair criticism we've gotten from Public.
Yeah. And to follow up on that financial commitment, what's the dollar amount projected out? So I think we're locked, we're theoretically, we're locking a future board into expenditures until when? And how much money is that?
Yeah, I'll just speak to that, we do have the meeting scheduled out at a four percent increase, two things to consider and kind of bookend, one is that the ILA says that they'll reassess to determine, to make sure that's enough, so the group could technically decide that four percent isn't enough to track, they could go up, but also, we have the ability to step out of that ILA as a provision that this board, I think.
What was that called, Robin? There was a fancy name for that kind of clause.
Oh.
We were talking about it.
Budini clause?
Santa.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we have the ability to step away as requested by the board not to bind future boards, so there's some options there, but we can put that together and do the research.
There's a special name for this type of a stock provision that gets you around the notion that you've tied up a future board, so that's been put in there for, to clear legal, past legal muster.
We'll do the research quickly and come back, because we know that the ILA will be on the next board meeting agenda.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, we're out of time, unless there's a burning issue, we'll be back at two PM.
We're adjourned.